If you would, join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Councilmember Dickinson will lead us in a word of prayer.
Most gracious and loving, here we roll by them. We ask you for wisdom on this life, if you go about the city's business. We ask you for surrender to accept the things we cannot change, courage to change the things that we can, and wisdom to know the difference. In your name we pray.
Clark, if you would, call the roll, please.
Neal?
Here.
Booker?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Dickinson?
Dickinson?
Here.
Gross?
Here.
Odom Camp?
Here.
Hammer?
Here.
Trigg?
Here.
Honeycutt?
Here.
Lowry?
Here.
Witcher?
Here.
Ms. Oliver's absent tonight. Would you have a living present?
Thank you. There's one correction that's been made to your minutes that states that Councilmember Lowry read the prayer, or led the prayer, as opposed to Councilman Norris as it was originally published. With that one correction, do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Motion made by Councilmember Gross, second. Councilmember Witcher, second. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, and the motion carries. First on our agenda tonight, we have Mr. Billy Ray, the Superintendent of the Glasgow EPB, that's going to give his annual report and some information on rate changes to their structure. So, Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for letting me come tonight and do our annual report, and also, I'm going to really thank you if you'll stick with me for a few slides that might look a little dull to talk about rates, because it's a really important thing that we've been working on for over two years. We're ready to implement those rates about the end of this year, and they're dramatically different than what anybody has ever seen before. So, it's important for you all to get started understanding what these, what this is about. But first, I've got a couple of our normal report slides. Glasgow is like about 2,000 other cities across the United States that own, that have a municipally-owned electric utility. And we're just proud to be in Glasgow. It began in about 1962, and up to today, we've had a nice history of growth and success in a lot of our areas. It's driven by a mission statement that we pay attention to every single day about trying to improve the standard of living for people that live here. We do that through, with 48 employees, three of which are shared with other agencies, with bits, and our safety coordinator. We're about a $40 million a year business. We have over $62 million worth of stuff all over town to deliver our services through. We've got a lot of debt, $24 million in long-term debt, and as far as we know, we're the nation's first infotricity utility. I'm going to talk real briefly. I'm not going to, I haven't got a whole bunch of slides. I'm not going to cover you up with slides, but just, we have three business units, really. One of them is growing like crazy, and that's our internet business. It grows a lot every year lately. This just represents the year 2014. You can see that we started off with around 1 gigabit per second of average traffic through the city at all times. We wound up the year at about 1.6, so it grew another 60% in 2014. And we're constantly thinking that that kind of growth is what we've got to deal with, so we never finish an upgrade to the internet product that we don't start our plans for the next upgrade, because it grows so quickly. I don't have a slide for our second business, which is the cable TV business. About all I could show you there is that it's very, very level. It's not growing. We've been at about 7,000 basic customers since 1988, when we were brazen enough to start a municipally-owned broadband network. Big things that happened in 2014 were that we were forced to negotiate new contracts with most all of the broadcasters and a lot of the programming services, and in every case, we're paying them way more than we ought to. Then finally, we're in the electric business, which is where we started, and it is not a growth business. If you look at the last several years, you can see a very easy-to-detect trend. The amount of energy that we're selling to the people of Glasgow is going down all the time. Now, some of that's driven by the loss of some big customers. You know, we've, there's a nice feel there where SKF used to be. Dana doesn't buy near as much energy as they used to, and neither does our Donnelly. And all of, beginning at our homes, all the way through every customer that we have, the appliances and the machines that people use are more efficient these days, and they use less energy. So, we're trying to figure out exactly how do you plan for the future when we have to have just as much plant, we have just as many miles of plant, but people are buying less energy through that plant, but they still want that plant to be in top-notch condition? Those realities are what drove us into this rate design that we've been struggling to create over the last two years. In 2015, we're going to be talking to the city some about our continued research into LED street lighting as opposed to the high-pressure sodium, the yellow lights that are all over town. We're going to be coming with proposals to expand our footprint of LED lighting. It's much more efficient, it's a lot prettier, the color rendition's a lot better, and it seems to require a lot less maintenance. We've got a big project going to convert cable TV to digital, and that fits in with that growth pattern that I showed you for internet product. If we need to go faster and faster with internet services all the time, it takes more and more, what we call bandwidth, or space on our network. To get that space, we need for cable TV to take less space. So, we're about to digitize our cable channels, which allows us to put six or seven channels in the space that one channel is today. What will that mean to the customers? Well, one of the things it'll mean is that it will seek out and destroy, not destroy, but it'll help you find TVs that are old enough not to have a digital tuner. If you've got any old tube-type TV around the house, you can count on it needing some kind of a digital converter on it within the next three or four months when we get this project going. If you've got a newer TV with a digital converter, it'll just, you won't even know the difference other than having to reprogram the TV, hit the auto-tune button one time. But it'll be a fairly big change. Some stuff will wind up on different channels. We'll have some new features. We'll have a digital program guide that will help you find, right now, if you have a digital TV, you're trying to watch HD channels, you have to know some kind of a, kind of a Greek numbering system to find stuff. But we'll organize that and give it a guide, so you'll be able to find that stuff easier. Next thing, as I said, we'll be doing big projects, spending a lot of money trying to, after we make more room with the digital upgrade, we'll immediately start upgrading the internet product again and trying to keep the speed of it going ever faster, hopefully without increasing rates. But that'll be another one of our huge projects for 2015. We're also going to continue something that's really been successful for Glasgow, and that is presenting itself as a laboratory for research to be done on, on a population that uses electricity and has ready access to high-speed broadband, and also has access to a small municipally-owned utility that's interested in research. So, we'll continue as we have in the past. We've had some successes. We have a number of applications out there and a number of overtures we've made to big companies that need to research technology, so we're trying to locate those projects in Glasgow. But finally, the main thing I want to talk to you about, we'll be winding up, actually, we've already wound up the design, and we've got an approval from our regulatory authority, TVA, to implement what we call the infotricity retail rate. We're going to be spending from tonight through the rest of this year using all of the media outlets that we have access to to help educate and inform the community about this massive change in the way we purchase electricity. We've got a long, a litany of plans on how to do that, but still, at the end of the year when we implement it, we also, most of us have lived here a long time, there'd be a lot of people that swear they hadn't heard anything about it. We're going to do our best, using everything, including skywriting, to get the word out. I've started tonight with putting some information in front of each of you all to try to encourage you to sign up for the portal. The portal is something created by some wizards on the EPB team to help you see your electric usage in real time and get data about your electric usage. That will be essential for you to make good use of the new rate structure. You're going to have to be attuned to what you're using, and you're going to have to be attuned to what we, when we make predictions about peaks, because your contribution to the peak is going to find its way right to your electric bill. So, everybody will want to get interested in that. Why have, have we had an electric rate that 100 years deep in the electric utility business now really doesn't work very well? Well, it's kind of driven by, by these things. 100 years or so ago, the, the first system to meter how much energy people were using was created, called the kilowatt-hour meter, and they looked something like this. And unfortunately, these meters weren't very smart. They only could register how much energy went by since the last time somebody visited it to look at it. So, electric utilities have universally taken the cost of the energy that they buy, the cost of fuel you have to burn to create energy, and the cost of, you know, having bucket trucks and people to rebuild the plant, lumped all that together and divided it by some number derived by hocus pocus, and priced all of the kilowatt-hours at a flat rate, and said, "Everybody, don't really worry about the time of day you use it. All kilowatt-hours are X." Like, for example, today in Glasgow, they're about 10 cents. With a rate structure like that, we've, the result has been something like this. This is one of those scary charts I promised you. This has, this represents one year of energy usage in Glasgow. There's one line on here for every day of 365 days in Glasgow, plotting the amount of energy used on this axis over here against the 24 hours in a day. So, and then these multicolored lines up here are, represent the one day each month when Glasgow's peak demand is set, and that's what TVA bases their charges to us upon. So, the multicolored lines are the peak for each month during the year, and you'll notice over here that some of those months peak over here in the morning, and those are the winter months, but most of them peak in the afternoon, about 2 or 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and those are the summer months. It's always on a weekday, and in the summer, it's usually, it's in the afternoon, and then the winter, it's in the morning. That's just life in Glasgow and the energy business. But that crazy shape with that big hump in it every day is really the result of that rate structure driven by that 100-year-old electric meter. That people haven't been asked to worry about what time of day, just use it however you want to. And so, all of the devices in our homes have kind of created a confederacy to, to create this bizarre load shape. And I want to spend just a couple of minutes walking you through how TVA, or any generation utility, provides the energy that it takes to answer the shape of the load. And for this example, I'm going to try to take this blue line here that is the peak day for the whole year and talk about how TVA runs generation to cover that. Well, first off, here at the bottom, we've got what we like to call base load generation, where these are probably nuclear units, units that can run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, never be turned down, and the only real problem with, with those compared to the load shape is that electricity has to perfectly match every second, actually 60 times a second, for every bit of a, every bit of the day. So, TVA's base load units can only run the amount of energy that, that never is, that people never use less than that. And that's fine. I've, I've shown these two nuclear units up here, and I've got these dollar signs on there, and that is to represent that these are the cheapest units. That's what we wish we could serve all the energy needs that way, because they're the least expensive. They're expensive to build, but they have no real appreciable, significant fuel cost, and so those are the best. And also, they're the, there's two ways to think about expense. Another way, there's the fuel cost and the, the debt service on the plant, but there's also the environmental impact. Nuclear has very little environmental impact, other than taking cold water out of a river and replacing it with often really warm water, but other than that, it's, it's the most attractive. Okay, then, as, as this blue line that I'm concentrating on here starts to come up at about 3 or 4 o'clock in the morning, TVA has to start adding more generation. And the first thing they would normally add, because it's very attractive from a cost basis, is hydro. That's when you, if you were at Wolf Creek Dam and trying to fish below the dam, and you couldn't understand why they started running those generators all of a sudden, well, this is why, because something's going on in the load shape, or this blue line that we're trying to trace, that causes them to need more energy, and so the quickest thing to start up is hydro. All you gotta do is open a valve, you start spinning the generator, and you get energy. But you can't just run those all the time, because you pretty soon run out of the resource, which is water in the lake. So, you have to be very specific about what hours you're going to run a hydro facility, because it has everything to do with life downstream, and how much water is going to be in the next reservoir or down, down the river. So, TVA would run out of hydro and start adding something like natural gas, that, what I've got represented in yellow there. But pretty soon in the day, as the load keeps coming up and they run out of water for hydro, they start this gray, these gray boxes. Those would be representing coal-fired plants. There's more dollar signs on there. They're more expensive to run, and they're very expensive from the environmental impact angle of it. When these things run, especially there's some really big ones just to our west over in, over at Paradise, when those things run and the smoke comes out of Paradise, it comes right down, the wind carries it right down to us, so it has a big impact on Glasgow. As the day goes by, what did I do? I'm not sure how I did that. As the day goes by, and hydro has run out, and the coal has gotten started, and more coal needs to be started, you run into one of the real inefficiencies and real cost drivers of, of generating electricity with coal-fired plants, and that is, if it's not part of the base load, like these nuclear units down here, and so you can't run them all day long, you have to start and stop coal-fired plants. That is where the real environmental impact occurs, because if, you know, coal plants burn coal, so you've got to figure out, number one, if you're going to turn it off, how do you, you've got to put the fire out. And then, after you put the fire out, and you want to start it again at, say, 8 o'clock the next morning, you've got to get the fire started again. You do that in a major coal plant by filling the boiler full of fuel oil and setting it on fire. Probably a million dollars' worth of fuel oil every time you want to start it, and they do it multiple times a day. That gets expensive, as you might imagine. So, as this blue line here keeps growing, we need even more generation. So, you bring on another coal plant. That's not enough yet, so then, we're going to burn some natural gas, get a couple of natural gas units going. After that, you can see now we're up to $5 signs. The next option TVA would have would be to go to its neighbors, call LG&E, call the Southern Company, call Duke, and try to buy power from them. And so, that's what I've got represented by the purple line there. These are purchases of power. Finally, when everything else has run out, they'll run the dirtiest units that they've got, right up at the top. Those may be diesel-powered or fuel oil-powered, really stuff that they'd never want to run, but when we have this peaky load shape, you have to run everything. Now, here gets to the point of why kilowatt-hours should really not be priced the same at all times of the day, because over here, if I can get my little pointer, I've lost it, there it is, these hours of the day, when all of our load could be covered by these nuclear plants, that power ought to be cheap. This time of day, when a kilowatt-hour is requiring some of every one of these assets, and the fuel that it takes to run them, kilowatt-hours ought to be expensive. The reason, the only reason they haven't been in the past is we didn't have metering sophisticated enough to catch that, to measure it. But in Glasgow, because we've, we're early in the broadband business, and because we've been a laboratory for meter manufacturers to, to build these products, we've had this ahead of our peers. And that's why Glasgow is going to become the first city in the United States to have a rate like the one we're going to implement at the first of the year, just because we've got that much of a technology lead on our peers. Obviously, we would like to, from an environmental standpoint and from just a cost of energy standpoint, we want these assets, or the number of these rectangles to be reduced. If we could change the shape of the way people use energy, we wouldn't need as many rectangles stacked up. If we don't need those rectangles, then they don't get put in the rates for us to pay. So, if you want to really do something long-term to reduce the long-term cost of power, you've got to be willing to change the shape of the way people use energy. And the way we've come up to get people to change the shape is by changing the price, and that's what we're planning on doing with infotricity rates. If you tunnel down into why a daily load shape has this strange hump in the middle of it, we've been able to find that out, and here's, here's the reason why. Once, once you tunnel into the data that we get from all the meters we have now, you start finding that we have hundreds, perhaps thousands, of customers on a peak day whose consumption looks like this, where these would be KW, and these down here would be the hours of the day. And so, on a winter day, we have customers that aren't using much energy for most of the day, so we're not selling them a lot of kilowatt-hours. That's why our kilowatt-hour sales are going down, but they do use a lot of energy right on peak. And so, they, it's, it's hundreds of customers like that that cause that big hump in the middle of our daily load shape. So, the hour when Glasgow peaks, we have a lot of customers that are setting their own personal peaks as well. Now, we've been trying to stop that for two years. You've, we've been blasting people with information on Facebook pages and email and on cable TV, or the Weather Channel, everything that we can think of. When we see one of those peaks coming, based on the weather forecast and everything we've learned about how Glasgow operates, we've been begging people to cut it off, try to, try to stay off of that peak. We've also developed a portal. What I, what I passed out to you today was information on how you can sign up to get your portal for your individual home, that gives you all this data about what you've been using, what your bill is so far in the month. We'll soon be enhancing this with not only how many dollars' worth of energy you've used this month, but also how many dollars' worth of energy would you have used under the new rate schedule. So, this will be part of our overall mission of educating everyone about this rate, so nobody is caught by surprise on December the 1st or January the 1st when we implement this. And we've been able to prove with the research that we've already done, modulating some thermostat settings and changing water heater settings, that it is possible for people to change the shape of their load. In fact, we've got similarly hundreds of customers now that on peak, they are at a minimum usage, and those are customers who help us hold that peak down. Problem is, with our existing rate structure, the people that do this and the people from that previous slide that had the poor load factor are paying the same thing. And now that we understand what's fair and what's not fair, we want the rate to address to help the people that are doing, that creating the peaks should get to pay for, and the people who are creating valleys should get paid for that. And that's at the center of this rate structure we're going to put in. It'll have these elements, whereas today, when you get an electric bill, it just basically says, well, it has a lot of other stuff on there about cable TV and internet and all that other stuff, but at the center of it, your electric bill tells, looks, how many kilowatt-hours you use during the month, times 10 cents or something with a fraction, and that equals your bill. The new infotricity rate will have an off-peak kilowatt-hour rate for the hours of the day when we're never going to peak, and it'll be a lot cheaper. In fact, all of the energy costs under the infotricity rate will be equal to our wholesale cost. We're not marking it up at all. In fact, we're kind of getting out of the energy sales business where that we have an incentive to try to get you to use more energy, so we have operating funds. We're, we're, we're going into what we call a non-volumetric rate, which means that we don't really care how much you use, you're just going to pay whatever TVA charges, we're not touching it. It just goes straight through to you. Have an off-peak rate, you're going to have an on-peak rate for the kilowatt-hours during about four-hour blocks during the summer, and different hours during different months will cost more, and that's what TVA charges us today. It'll sail right through to the end customer. Finally, there will be a coincident peak demand charge during that one hour each month when we peak. If you, if you zoomed in on the, that vertical axis of how high that peak was, you'd see that it was really made up of 7,500 contributions, that's how many meters we have in Glasgow, and everybody piles their contribution up to equal that peak. Well, we are now able to measure everyone's contribution, and we're going to pass the cost along, straight from what TVA charges us, so you'll pay for what you contribute to the peak. Now, I've just talked about passing everything through at wholesale. Obviously, we've got to have some money to keep the system operating. If we're going to start moving toward collecting that under the new rate structure, that will be our, the money that we need to operate the network, we're going to call a network connection charge, and that'll be a relatively fixed number that you pay. If you've got a meter sitting over there that never uses any kilowatt-hours, and you've been enjoying just paying $15 a month or so for that, that'll be over. That, that connection charge is going to get a lot higher, and that only makes sense. It costs just as much money for us to maintain, trim the trees, change out the transformer, do all that stuff for a meter using 1 kilowatt-hour a month as it does with a meter using a million kilowatt-hours a month. So, all of those things added together will become your monthly infotricity bill that will start arriving around the end of the year. All of those things together, plus this internet of things, our ability to communicate directly with appliances, water heaters, thermostats, even new sources of energy, solar arrays, battery systems, all of those things with this rate structure will give us a much more sustainable energy future in our little community. And we think that the, that the rate structure is the beginning to a lot of new opportunities for our community. That's all I've got for you. I'd be glad, happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, what you're saying is you're looking for what you use. So, would the average rate in the city go up or would it go down if you're not using a lot? You know, would older folks in the city, would the rate stay the same?
Joe, it's no new revenue for us, so I don't want to split hairs, but the, so the average will be equal. But a lot of people's bill will go up dramatically if they're going to ignore the peak and be, and continue to be all over it. That's, they're going to pay the cost that they create. A lot of people's bills will go down dramatically. That's what I put, that's what those slides were, to demonstrate people that, that manage to get load off during peak are going to get rewarded for that. But if you're, if you're the one, one of the ones really driving the peak, instead of us kind of socializing it like we have in the past, it's going to be specific. You know, you're, you will pay for your contribution. It has nothing to do with... It has nothing to do with age, economic strata, address. That's one thing we've learned in our research. It's not, the people that will be negatively impacted don't belong to any known economic class or address. It's just habits of the way people use energy.
I have a question, because I know how difficult it is to change a habit, and if we wait until December, January to change a habit of how we use electricity, I think that would be difficult for a lot of people. What are the strategies that those people who have reduced their peak usage have put into place that we all might start to adjust to that now, instead of waiting until we get the first bill and we're in shock?
Excellent question. Well, first of all, you're not going to need to wait till you get the first bill, because we're going to use that portal that I've given you the instructions to very soon. It's going to start tugging on your sleeve and saying, "Hey, here's how much you're paying for energy under today's rate, here's how much it would be under the new rate." So you're going to start seeing it before, for several months, before it becomes effective. How are the ways that people have done that? There are many. Number one, they're just paying attention when we say, using Facebook or Twitter or text on your phone or on TV, one of the many. They're paying attention to it when we say, you know, at 3:00 Tuesday, it looks like a good chance that we're going to peak for the month, and they're either making their own choice to go over to their thermostat before they leave for work that day and raising it up some or lowering it some. Or there, many people are participating in research projects that we're doing where we're putting in programmable thermostats that are addressable via the internet, and they're allowing us to move it around for them so they don't have to think about it. We're doing the same thing with water heaters. We've done a lot of research with heat pump water heaters that are much more efficient, use much less energy, even if you don't control them, but GE, one of our research partners, has been making water heaters for us that become an element on the Wi-Fi or the wireless network in your home, and we can talk to the water heater, tell it to heat up a bunch of water at night off-peak, and then let it cruise through the day so it's not on during peak. There are coming things. Again, this rate will, when we become ambivalent about how much energy you use, we're also going to be there to help people learn the latest trends in things like solar power, and maybe we'll be helping, we may be helping you put a solar panel on your roof, and we may be charging batteries with it to help you stay off-peak. So there's a lot of technology solutions, but you can do it with no technology at all. Just pay attention, watch for the crawl on the Weather Channel, know that in the summer it's going to be, if the weather forecast says it's going to be 105 degrees, there's a good chance that Glasgow's going to set a peak at 3:00 in the afternoon on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. Just try not to be on during those hours, and certainly don't do things like doing clothes and running your clothes dryer on peak. I mean, that's, that's not a good idea anyway, because all that heat stays in the house and makes it even more difficult for the air conditioner to work. So there's high-tech solutions, and there's tremendously low-tech solutions, and they're both effective. Anything else?
There may need to be some, like, in-house demonstration for some of us older people and people that don't have Facebook and people that like to live in the past. So, you know, she addressed, changing our ways is difficult, but when we see the dollars and cents, that should be a good incentive. Probably a little chart would help us or something, this is the time that you're out of whack, so to speak. It's just a red area or something like that, maybe.
As I say, Councilman, we're going to try to use every media that we can come up with to translate this message or transmit this message, and that's why we've asked TVA to approve it so many months before we're going to implement it. In fact, they had to be assured that we were going to educate the community for many months before they would even give us approval to implement it. So if you are not getting the message, let us know what is your favorite medium to get the message, and we'll get it to you that way. Anything else? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. The next item on our agenda is a municipal order, appointing Peggy Bates to the Tourism Commission. On order of the mayor, Peggy Bates is hereby appointed to the Glasgow Baron County Tourist and Convention Commission to fill the unexpired term of Jason Eskamila as the restaurant representative, whose term ends June 30, 2015, and she is further appointed to fill that same position for a subsequent term commencing July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2018, subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council. Do I hear a motion to approve? Have that motion by Councilmember Hammer in second. Councilmember Neal, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, and the motion carries. Next is another municipal order, appointing Bobby Lee Hurt to the Tourism Commission.
On order of the mayor, Bobby Lee Hurt is hereby appointed to the Glasgow Baron County Tourist and Convention Commission to fill the unexpired term of Peggy Bates as the chamber representative, whose term ends June 30, 2015, and he is further appointed to fill that same position for a subsequent term commencing July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2018, subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council.
Do I have a motion to approve this order? So moved by Councilmember Gross in second. Councilmember Norris, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, and the motion carries. Yet another municipal order, reappointing Brian Clemmons to the GEDL Loan Fund Board.
On order of the mayor, Brian Clemmons is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board. This appointment is for a two-year term expiring March 31, 2015, subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council.
Do I hear a motion to approve this order? So moved by Councilmember Neal in second. Councilmember Booker, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, and the motion carries. Next on the agenda is a motion to go into closed session, but before we do that, I'd like to go ahead and share the announcements for those of you all who may not wish to stay. On May the 1st at 8:00 PM, the Kentucky Headhunters will be in concert, and that is an album release party, and that will be held at the Plaza. On May the 2nd at 7:00 PM, the Sneed Family Homecoming will be performing at the Plaza, and they will be featuring Daley and Vincent as well. Also, on May the 5th at 11:00 AM, the hanging of the baskets on the square, they will have a celebration out here where we hang the flower baskets on the light posts, so we encourage you to be there for that at 11:00. May the 9th and the 10th at the Plaza, Miss Adrienne's 15th Anniversary Dance Studio Recital will be held, and we encourage you to attend that. One last announcement is our surplus auction will take place May the 1st, that's Friday, that will be at the Recreation Department down at the old Liberty Street Gymnasium. Correct? Okay. Are there any other announcements? That being the case, would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to KRS 61810 for discussion of proposed or pending litigation. Have motion by Councilmember Gross in second. By Councilmember Hammer, all in favor signify by saying aye. We are in closed session.